I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Councilmember Lou who is unable to join us this evening.
Thank you. So that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, changes?
Move adoption. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we have a presentation remembering former Brisbane council member and Mayor Paul Gorki.
Actually, I think it's a citizen presentation.
Okay. Citizen presentation.
Paul Gorki served on the City Council from 1973 to 1980, and I had the good fortune to serve with him on the same council. So did Janine Hodge, and we are the only remaining members, I believe, here from that council. Janine Hodge couldn't be here this evening, but she did write a short thing, memory of Paul that I'd like to read for you for the record. The two issues Paul cared most about were preserving small-town Brisbane and saving San Bruno Mountain. During our time together on the council, he and I were on the short end of a three-to-two split, especially regarding these two issues, which we both cared most about. Paul had a real sweet tooth, so whenever there was an item regarding either issue on the agenda, he and I would meet beforehand at the counter in the Twenty-Three Club for dessert and coffee. Fueled by caffeine and sugar, we would strategize about how to get that third vote, and we most often did. Paul was an intelligent and courageous man whose legacy surrounds us every day. Sincerely, Janine Hodge. For myself, I remember Paul Gorki as a valued fellow city council member in the seventies. We were both elected for the first time in 1973. As the Brisbane History Book, The First Twenty-Five Years, described it, that was "a stormy time of transition in our city." After a bitter recall of three previous council members that divided the community, there was a need of building bridges and attending to the challenges facing us in spirit of cooperation despite individual differences. Among our voters, the transition also reflected strong environmental awareness and a new cultural tolerance unprecedented, in which aspect Paul was a trailblazer. Paul's early environmental activity in the 1960s already involved fighting the Rockefeller Plan to bulldoze the top of the San Bruno Mountain and dump the dirt into the bay via a conveyor belt. That effort also included the new Save San Francisco Bay Organization, Bay Area-wide, and South San Francisco's councilman, later Congressman Leo Ryan. He was very important. This work really represented the beginning of Brisbane's need to advocate for our own unique goals and work with powerful friends outside of town, which has proven a saving grace in a later battle of saving the mountain and keeping our special small-town status. Paul was a gifted music teacher, and his community contributions included often playing the piano for the seniors' club. Personally, I had the good fortune to have him play a small composition, a world premiere actually, as a theme music of a video for a national fundraising campaign. Upon retirement, Paul moved away from here, and later he had to face severe personal financial challenges. I remember him trying to return to live in Brisbane, to live in the senior housing here, but he was unlucky in the lottery that determined who lived there. When I last saw him not too long ago, he was living in very limited circumstances in San Francisco, but enjoying his participation in the Grace Cathedral community. May the legacy of Paul's pioneering work not be forgotten, and his soul rest in peace.
Thank you. Thank you. And Michelle wanted to say some few words.
It was a tumultuous time in Brisbane, and Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, and my father was one of the district councilmen that got recalled, so you know that there was a lot of feeling there. But Paul Gorki was a hero for Brisbane. And there is a long story that he wrote that was on the Mountain Watch website for years, and it's called "The Garbage Wars," and I hope you indulge me because I'd like to read a few sections of it. Starts out with, "I bought property in Brisbane in 1962, and I built in 1964 and '05. Richard Burr, bless his heart, came to visit me." Richard was an ex-planning commissioner, and he and two others had been thrown off the planning commission because they voted against a 20-year contract that would have a 10-year optional extension, making it a 30-year contract. The 10-year extension was at the option of the scavengers. It was going to be a decision whether to continue or not. The only council member who voted in Richard Burr's favor was Ernie Conway, who lived on King's Road. In 1965, Ed Swinderlof joined Ernie Conway, both in opposition to the dumping, so now there was a three-two council. The city attorney, Conrad Reich, and he had been brought over from sanitary district, and that's right next to the scavengers, and he was our city attorney, and he kept ruling for the scavengers. So it seemed as if we had a plan here to keep things correct for the scavengers, and so he said, "This is a legal and binding contract, so forget it. Don't raise hell." Well, we did anyway, and that's when Lumen, Lumen Drake, and I met through the Brisbane Citizens for Civic Progress, BCCP, the worst four-letter word that the scavengers could ever think of. The BCCP was already started, and I became president of the BCCP, and that's when things really started in this town. Whenever the scavengers lost an election, they would take us to court, and whenever they would lose in court, they would come back to the city with another election. There was this constant, constant uproar going on here. I'm going to skip forward to a section called "The Mountain and the Bay." This is all in his own words, by the way. Tongue Text owns all of Sierra Point, and they are all, and they own all of the fill, all of the southern Pacific lands, and why this is so important, this garbage story in connection to the mountain, is that it ties it all together. During 1965, we had a visit from Warren Kramer of Citibank in New York, owned by the Rockefellers, and he told the council that they had a little plan to give San Bruno Mountain a haircut. They called it a haircut. They were going to take 50 feet, they said, off part of the mountain. Now, before dear old Bruce Brugman became owner of the Bay Guardian, he worked for the Redwood City Tribune as a photographer, and he saw this machinery going on on the mountain up here, and so he went and took pictures of it. West Bay Associates had dug an area the size of a football field on the southern slopes of the mountain, and that's when Bruce began to contact Lumen and the Brisbane Citizens for Civic Progress. He said, "Look, guys, this is a giant thing they're planning up here. This is no little thing." So it turns out that they had a little plan, the largest earth-moving job since the China Wall. The Great Wall of China, you know, you can photograph it from the moon. You can see it, and it was going to be this little thing that they were going to do here, going to give the mountain a haircut. It turns out they were going to take the mountain down, and it was just going to be a giant flat area up to the antennas, that little part up there, Radio Ridge, was going to be left. Let me skip forward to a part that's kind of fun. Now, this is interesting. Ronald Reagan was governor at the time, and he had hired Casper Weinberger as his press secretary in Sacramento. Lucy Conway and I went up there with 27,000 signatures to save San Francisco Bay, gathered by Save the Bay. So Lucy and I had 20,000 signatures, which is a pile of paper, to present to Governor Reagan, and he went off to his office, and they wouldn't let us see him. They said, "No, you can leave them here, but you can't see them." So we said, "Well, we'll come back this afternoon," because that's when Reagan was going to be in his office and wanted to present the signatures to him personally, and they said, "We probably wouldn't be able to do that, but we could come back anyway." So we left, and we were walking down the hallway, and all of a sudden I saw a whole bunch of people coming up the way, led by Casper Weinberger. Now, Casper Weinberger knew us cold by now because he was our defense attorney, so Casper saw Lucy and me, and he said, "Hi, Paul," and the governor was right behind him, and he said, "It's nice to see you here." So Lucy takes the 27,000 signatures and says, "Here, Governor Reagan." So we waylaid Reagan and handed him the signatures for Save the Bay. That's all involved with the mountain because saving the bay, we were also stopping the mountain's destruction because that was going to be the bay fill. You see how it all ties together? It was a combination of things. And goes on to say, "We were the first city to join Brisbane," saying, "No mountain cutting, no filling in our city." I'm going to skip down. In those years, we were lucky. The environmental movement was just blossoming. It was in its adolescence. Oh, my goodness. The word ecology wasn't even invented yet when we were in all these fights. So the movement built up and built up, and in the county here, and of course, we had two supervisors who were very much with us in wanting to stop the bay fill. The third one was Bakachiocho, and he was on the fence. We had this business about the mountain and something about changing it into a park, and it was a proposition, and the county held hearings about whether to hold the election or not. It was a county election because we had all these parks down in the southern, but no parks in the north county. So that went through, and I can't say his name, but I should know it. But anyway, he took a stand with us, and for this, he received a great deal of persecution, particularly from the developers. They took cement trucks and ran them around City Hall while they were holding the hearings. They had a demonstration going on out there all during the meeting, showing that the unions and particularly the builders were death against this idea of saving the mountain, of saving San Bruno Mountain. I mean, 100,000 people, that's a lot of housing, that's a lot of bucks, that's a lot of earth-moving, and that's a lot of cement. So Paul Gorki really was an environmental hero in Brisbane, and so were your parents, Clark.
Michelle? Thank you.
Well, I've known Paul a long time, and he moved to Brisbane in '62, actually, you know, eight years old. Paul lived on Two Margaret, where you have your house there, Jerry, that little one right there, that cottage. Every Saturday and Sunday, he was at our house. He was like a clock. I think it was like 7:30 a.m., doorbell would ring, and it would be Paul. And he'd come in and just start chatting away with my parents, and it was that way every week for years, every weekend. Paul was like part of the family. It's like you knew Paul was going to be there Saturday morning, and that was it because he, you know, taught school during Monday through Friday. And he was an interesting guy, a very articulate man. My father built his house, so helped him design and build it, you know, and so Paul wanted an A-frame, and he put a pitch on it, like, you know, if anybody wants to see it, it's 41 Margaret. But, I mean, he had a pitch on that house, and it was built on the canyon, and it was quite a sight to see because all the tongue-and-groove boards that were put in there, we stained every one of those, my brothers and I and John Burr. We sat up there on Margaret Road, and we stained those things, and we're little kids, you know, at the time, but, you know, every one of those boards, we stained by hand. And then my father and his other guy, there's only two guys that built that house, they put them up and tack them in, and it was an interesting, interesting time. So all those things from the Brisbane Citizens for Civic Progress, I have all those papers, and I have the stamps and everything like that. It's kind of funny to go through that box every once in a while, and certainly that's something that I would donate to the city archives, you know, because it is a part of Brisbane's early civic history in the 60s, so Paul was missed. I was sorry to see him move out of Brisbane, you know, and remember one of the last times I saw him down in City Hall in San Francisco. It's kind of a funny story. I don't think I should tell it, but maybe I should. It was kind of funny because he mentioned Bruce Brugman, and it happened to be where the, the time we were looking at the mud in Municipal Utility District, and Bruce, after the meeting down there in the Board of Supervisors, and I was with Hal Topol, our city attorney at the time, and Bruce took it upon himself to call me PG&E shill, which, that was the wrong thing to do. And I got a little bit angry, so I got in his face about it, you know, and we're like, and it's kind of really the first time I became somewhat combative to somebody, and he was a big guy, so, you know, I thought I'd back him, back him down, and see who's going to be foghorn, leghorn here. And Paul, little old Paul's getting between us going, "Now, boys, now, boys," and he's trying to separate. It was pretty funny, but I remember looking at Paul going, he thought that we were actually going to get into a fight, but, you know, neither one of us did, but that was one of the last times that I actually saw Paul, and that was, you know, 12, 15 years ago. I saw him in another function here in Brisbane after that. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah. But he was a good guy, and he was, you know, he was really, really good for Brisbane in the time that he spent on the council, you know, through all his years of being an activist, and, you know, and he was a great music teacher, too, for El Camino High School for many years, Cliff. I think you-
Also, San Francisco State.
Yeah, San Francisco State, too, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I knew Mr. Gorki from Berbury School. So when I was in third grade, he was teaching third grade. I didn't have him as a teacher, but I did have him for music. I want to say we learned how to play the piccolo or the flute, this plastic thing. You know, another thing I remember about Mr. Gorki was, he also was interested in science, and so he would teach us science, and in this one experiment, you know, when you were talking, Michelle, it reminded me of that experiment where he gave us all magnifying glasses in a aluminum foil plate, and we crumpled up a piece of paper. We used the magnifying glass to make the piece of paper catch on fire. You know, one of the kind of quirky things about Mr. Gorki was that if you got in trouble, he'd pinch you by the ear, and heaven forbid that you got in trouble on the far side of the playground, because, you know, that's what he'd do. If you were out of line, he'd grab you by the ear, and he would just pull you along all the way to the place where you had to then stand and wait until recess was over. But, but anyway, it was funny, you know, then seeing him at that anniversary, and we chatted a little bit, and it was great to hear about all the things that he had done in Brisbane, and so it gave a new perspective on the man, and it's just nice to hear the stories and to honor his life here in Brisbane, so, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know that Sean and Jerry and Tony, they all knew Paul, too. Did you want to say anything? Yeah, sure. All right, Jerry?
Oh, of course. I just didn't have a slip, so.
Hi, Jerry Sully for Margaret. I didn't fill out one, I'm sorry. Paul was our neighbor on Margaret Avenue, and I didn't know him too well when we first moved up there, but every December, he had this giant motor home. They would take off from Mexico, and they would let all the neighbors know, move all the cars, because here comes the motor home down Margaret. So that was exciting to see if they would make it, and they did. And he was a very nice neighbor. Our neighbor Sharon and Michael, he would house-sit for them and take care of their parrot. He was friends with Joan and Ally, and just a really nice fellow, and I saw him sometimes at the Live at Mission Blue concert series, he would come, and he was just a really dear guy, and we miss him very much. Thank you.
So Paul was a neighbor, and he also house-sat right next door to me, so he and I used to walk up on the mountain, and he always had an endearing love for the mountain, but one of the things that Paul was really instrumental in helping to do was to defeat the Garbage Burner that the Pacific scavengers wanted to build in Brisbane, and that was a, that was a really nice fight that saved this town. If that Garbage Burner had ever gone in, Brisbane would not be what it is today, and so he's an unsung hero in that regard. So he was, and he was a great city councilman and wonderful attribute to this community. Great guy. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean.
Tony, do you want to put your two cents in?
Anyone else like to speak from the audience?
So I have a couple of things to say, but I didn't want to preempt my neighbors.
Can you move your microphone a little closer?
Is your microphone on, Ray?
Yeah.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
So Clark can talk about, you know, the early 60s, and, you know, Cliff talks about his work in school and so forth, but I'm glad, Sean, that you mentioned the whole Garbage Burner event, because that was right after Paul left the council, because that big event was in 1982, and he left the council in 1980, I think. And for one thing, you know, you mentioned that he was a hero, and certainly a community hero and a forerunner of a lot of the things that have defined what Brisbane is all about, and so in that sense, he was a pioneer. But I worked with Paul on that campaign. At the time, I was on the planning commission, and this was an interesting historical event because in some ways, it's comparable to the Baylands, because the way it evolved, the scavengers proposed this huge Garbage Burner that was going to take care of all the garbage from basically the northern peninsula, and there was this stack, I remember it was over 200 feet high, was the stack that they were going to put in, and they were prepared to really spend a lot on the campaign because the way the council set it up, there was going to be a vote of the citizens, remember, Sean? And the vote was on changing the zoning, because the current zoning where they wanted to put it in the Baylands didn't allow that kind of heavy industrial activity. So in order for it to go there, it had to be, zone had to be changed, and that council said, "Okay, we'll let the people vote on that." So basically, it was a public decision by a vote as to whether that scavenger, and we called it the Garbage Incinerator, of course, they called it the Resource Recovery Facility. We had a little different name for it, but it was a very active and very dramatic campaign because the scavengers spent a lot of dough, and so we would get flyers virtually every week, and why this was such a great thing, and this, you know, they argued that it was a great environmental thing and so forth, and then we had the Citizens CBE, what was the acronym? It was a biological environmental group who had demonstrated the problems of the current burning and created dioxins, and, you know, it was a pretty awful pollution that would come from the incinerators that existed at that time. And so there was a company called Cotellus, I think, that owned the Executive Park, which, you know, now UBC owns, and they were not happy about a garbage incinerator going right across the street from a place they wanted to develop. So they were prepared to put in a lot of dough to support, and there was a citizens committee, and Paul Gorki was the chair of that committee, and put in one heck of a lot of time, and I was, you know, a supporting person, but he was really the driving force. And so we had this consultant, and we had flyers, and we had all these pictures about all this awful garbage incinerator, and so it was a heck of a campaign. And I always remember that the citizens of Brisbane really spoke loud and clear, and they voted three to one against that incinerator. And I think, you know, all of that campaign and putting it all together would not have happened without Paul Gorki. I mean, he was really the organizer. And so, you know, I really agree with what Michelle said, and Anya and Sean, you know, I mean, he really was a, not only all the work on the mountain, but also making sure that things like a garbage incinerator, which would have changed, you know, Brisbane forever, just didn't happen. So he really helped define the future of Brisbane. So he was a very important figure in that period of Brisbane's history, and I think it's really good that we're remembering him and recognizing his legacy.
Thank you. I didn't know Dr. Gorki, but it sounds like we all owe a lot to him and the, what Brisbane's become and the citizens committees that have come out of it and the environmental advocacy that has come out of it has been a long history that we really thank him for. So with that, can we close in memory of him also?
Absolutely.
So that brings us to oral communications number one, and I have one slip from the public, and that is Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I couldn't come without bitching about something, could I? Those piles out on the Baylands are getting really high, and I don't have, you know, trigonometry skills to actually calculate that, but they sure look like they're taller than 75 feet to me now, and I'd like to know a status on that and what happened with the temporary agreement that we had in November that was supposed to expire in November, and fortunately, it's not been as dusty, which is good, although it has been dusty, but the piles are really high, and I'd really like to know what's going on with that, and is this madness ever going to stop, or are we just too excited to take all those truck fees and just let the rest of it go to hell? Because it really is going to hell, so I'd like to, I'd like a status report on that. I really would. And also, I think that along Tunnel Road, they've put these big concrete blocks, and at first, I'm like, "Oh, okay, that's interesting," but I noticed today that weeds are growing up around the concrete blocks, and that you can't really see where the concrete blocks start like you used to be able to before the weeds grew up. I'm kind of thinking they're dangerous, because if you had to pull off the road and didn't see them, you would be running into a concrete block and could get seriously injured, and that is a busy road, and I'm questioning the wisdom of that, and if they're going to have them there, they at least need to weed whack around them so that people can see them. It is a danger. Thank you.
Those were actually put there to deter the dumping.
Yes. And I'm sure that if staff has a quick comment, that'd be great. If not, we can get a later status on the aisle heights.
Yeah, I can update this really quickly. Randy, do you want to speak to the latest report on the heights? Randy, do you want to speak to the latest report on the heights?
Sure, so we receive a bi-monthly report on the piles that are out there, and the last one we received was effective at the end of May. And what they do is they go out and they survey the highest point of each of the different areas that you'll recall from when we did the memorandum. And at the end of May, no, January or March, at the end of April, they were in compliance. They're all below the maximum limits that were specified for each area, Phil.
Thank you.
And as far as the permit goes, that will be before the Planning Commission. I can't give you a specific date right now, I'll get that information to you, but that application is in, it will be before the Planning Commission fairly soon, and then on up to the council.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here who would like to speak on oral communications? Seeing those hands, that moves us to the consent calendar, which is item A to approve the city council minutes of May 21, 2014, and B to adopt resolution 2015-23, authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Office of Spill Prevention and Response for Oil Spill Response Equipment at the Brisbane Marina. And do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
I'll second, even though I wasn't here for the city council many minutes, I did read them. See, I got railroaded in something. Thanks, Cliff.
Pays to be here.
We thought you would want it that way.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approving item A and B. And that brings us to new business, item A, to consider directed, I assume directing staff to use Rennie Sloan-Holtzman-Sakai for the provision of labor negotiations as provided for in the June 17, 2013 agreement for city attorney services. Staff report, please.
Sure. We have been using a firm called IEDA for labor relations, for labor negotiations for at least the last 15 years. This firm we use on a monthly retainer, so we pay a flat amount every month, whether we are in negotiations or we're not in negotiations, whether we have questions regarding labor relations or not. We are looking, in 2013, the city council chose Rennie Sloan-Holtzman-Sakai as their city attorney as part of that agreement in 2013, and then updated again in 2014. The city council contemplated transferring labor relations and negotiations to the firm Rennie Sloan-Holtzman-Sakai. We were waiting until our negotiations through the last round were up, and we were about to start our next round of negotiations. As you know, the contracts with most of our employees expire as of December of 2015. We're beginning the process of the labor negotiations, so we thought this would be a good time to make that change, when all of our contracts were fresh. The contract with Rennie Sloan is for $285 an hour for Mr. Holtzman's time. We anticipate that we would have no more of a need than 100 hours during any given fiscal year. The reason being is this is more on a time and materials basis, so we will only be charged for when we actually have him at the table, or when we are using him as part of our strategic background of trying to figure out where we're going to go with the negotiations. One way that we're going to try and limit the number of hours we use him and use the firm is to have the city staff, which has been working on the negotiations for the last 15 years, take a bigger lead at the table with the different bargaining groups. Over the last 15 years, myself, and then I think over the last 10 years, Ms. Gesick Sid has been at the table with IEDA. We have learned a lot from them. We have done negotiations in other municipalities and in other situations as well. So we have a lot of experience on a day-to-day basis. So we're going to try to take the lead on a number of the ones. However, we will use Mr. Holtzman when talking about more of the strategic overviews, or if other bargaining groups have their professional negotiators at the table. We want to make sure that we have equal ability to negotiate. We believe this will take less than 100 hours of his time. So we have in the contract a cap of $28,500 for any given year. If it's going to go above that, we would come back to the city council and ask for a supplemental appropriation for that. We also anticipate that if we are able to settle agreements for more than one year, and it's what I gave as an example of a three-year contract, you know, it would cost us about $57,000 for IEDA over that three-year period. Whereas with Mr. Holtzman, you know, we would have about maybe $28,000 maybe in the first year if we went that high. And then that would leave us an additional $29,000 while we were not in negotiations for other questions that came up during that period of time, and we would still have a savings through that process. So we anticipate going through this is going to save us money. It's also something that the city council had anticipated when they signed the contract in 2013, and they reiterated in 2014. And what you have before you as attachments was the 2013 agreement, and then you have the retention letter for Rennie Sloan-Holtzman-Sakai to provide the labor relations services.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Motion to approve to direct staff to use Rennie and Sloan-Holtzman-Sakai for labor negotiations.
Yep, I'll second that, but just wanted to say a couple of things. That the subcommittee dealing with this matter certainly has, you know, met with Mr. Holtzman, and we're quite comfortable with his professional experience and skills. And we're hoping that this new approach, where the actual city staff engage in a lot of the preliminary and initial negotiations, so that it's kind of a more personal, in-house kind of discussion, and hopefully, you know, harmonious outcomes. And on the other hand, many negotiating groups do have professional representatives, sometimes they're lawyers, and need to have equal stature in those circumstances, and that's what Mr. Holtzman will provide. And Terry and I as a subcommittee were, you know, very comfortable with him and with the firm. And one of the things I did bring up is that it is a pretty good-sized firm, and this actually, labor negotiations is one of their specializations. And so there was one thing I wanted Stuart to speak a little to, and that is that even though he'll be the lead person, there will be some backup people. And I asked Stuart, was he comfortable with that? And I would appreciate at least, you know, answering that question, so, because that's something we're voting on too. We are voting not only on Mr. Holtzman, but also his backup staff.
As you said, I mean, one of the reasons why we went with a larger firm for the overall city attorney services is that there's a depth in the bench that you don't see in smaller firms. They have listed out three additional people in their agreement. I have not met with any of those three people, but we have worked with other people in their labor relations office. Genevieve Ng, who we use to, working through our personnel rules and regulations, and we've talked to her on different personnel issues throughout the last couple of years. We have found her to be very professional, very timely in her work, very focused on getting us the information we need in a very timely fashion. So we're very comfortable with the aspect of labor relations of the firm that we have used. So it's, you know, we're looking forward to this change. Although we do appreciate the IEDA for all that they did for us. Because if you remember, we were able, during the good times back in 2000, get an eight-year agreement using IEDA, so that was very beneficial for us at that time.
And I agree with the conclusions we came at the subcommittee level, where we were happy with the staff's decision to, or looking at the financial that would be blended over a two- or three-year period, and would be good to try to move forward our labor relations. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
No, I'm good.
Any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Thank you. And then we have item B, which is to consider authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with L.B. Hayhurst to perform an employee compensation study. And a staff report, please.
Sure. As part of the agreements that are expiring on December 31, 2015...
I didn't, I turned my microphone off when I talked, I'm sorry. As part of the agreements that are expiring on December 31 of 2015, one of the items in the agreements is that we would perform a compensation study within 90 days of July 1st. So it's that time of year that we need to perform that compensation study. We sent out proposals, and we received a number of them back, and we thought as staff that the highest rated person for us was L.B. Hayhurst. L.B. Hayhurst-Lawny, who is the principal in the firm, met with the budget subcommittee to talk about the compensation study and what would be achieved through that. The subcommittee had a lot of good questions for him, and trying to understand the compensation study overall. To let you know that we are looking to use about 65 positions within the city as benchmarks. So normally what you do is you don't use every single position, because there are certain positions that we have that are not really applicable to other cities. Not everybody has a harbor, so finding, or marina, so finding harbor master comparables is difficult. So there are positions like that that are one-offs that we will not be comparing. When we are looking at the overall compensation study, we're not just looking at salaries and health insurance, which is what a lot of cities will do, but we will look at all different kinds of benefits, which would include not only health insurance, but also dental vision, if other cities are offering those, various leaves. One of the challenges always is that different cities give different leave packages. So part of L.B. Hayhurst's idea will be to make sure that we are comparing apples to apples when we're looking at different types of leave and leave balances. And we'll also be looking at pension benefits to make sure that we are comparable there as well. The compensation study, we will bring it back to the city council as part of our negotiation process. The compensation study is to inform the negotiations, it's not to be directive during the negotiations. So, you know, depending on what is found in the compensation study, we will ask council to give us direction on how they want us to use that in the negotiations. The cost of the study is going to be about, is going to be not to exceed $19,000. We have a list of cities that we have used in the past that's been attached as a scope of service. We will be talking with the bargaining groups to see if maybe some of those cities no longer apply, as in the case of the police department, you know, some of those departments no longer exist. So we may need to look at changing those out, and we'll work with the other bargaining groups on that issue. The benefit of having the bargaining groups agree with the cities that the city has chosen is it makes the negotiation more about the information that's derived from the compensation study, as opposed to arguing over which cities should be in the compensation study, and having two different compensation studies then compete with each other. So that's one of the reasons why we try and do this all through a very friendly perspective. The cost is going to be $19,000. This is a supplemental appropriation, although we knew that we were going to do one, we did not have, go out for a proposal, so we didn't have an exact dollar amount in our budget. Just to let you know, at mid-year, I had projected $2.3 million for the city hotel tax. As of the end of April, which is the last full month we have collections for, we will be receiving at least $2.4 million, or $2,450,000 at a minimum this year. So the $19,000 will not have an impact on the general fund reserves. So our recommendation is that we have the mayor sign an agreement with L.B. Hayhurst, and that we allocate $19,000 from additional revenues this year to pay for that item.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Motion to approve the mayor to execute an agreement with L.B. Hayhurst to perform an employee compensation study.
Second? Yes, sure. Does that include the appropriation as well?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay.
So who was the second? I heard it in unison.
No, no, Cliff.
It was two seconds.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
I just wanted to be sure that...
It was two seconds.
Two seconds, yeah, right.
Yes.
But Cliff was first.
Any public comment on this item? Moving forward, we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to city manager's report on upcoming activities. But before you do that, I did make an error and did not report out from our closed session, so perhaps the city attorney can do that first.
The council did meet in closed session to provide, to have a respect to labor negotiations. There was no action taken by the council in the closed session.
Thank you. And then we can go on to staff reports.
Sure. There's a couple of items. One, left a flyer on your dais there, just noting that this Saturday is the annual San Mateo County, or 11th Annual San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day. It takes place at the San Mateo County Events Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we will have this information on our website, if anybody wants to take a look at that. And I don't know, did you want to speak to this at all, or no? Okay, yes. Supervisor Tessie A. is involved in this, and this is her representative.
Sorry. Good evening. Arlene Shields from Supervisor Tessie A.'s office. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I can share with you, we are really emphasizing for folks to come, folks to come, between 10 and 11, so that they can enter for free, they can park for free, and they get a bag handout with some goodies inside. It's a really great opportunity. So we'll have CPR classes, we'll have CERT from many cities participating. We have about 38 booths from various organizations that will cover safety, home safety, pet safety, a lot of safety. So it's an incredible event, 11th year, they're super organized over at OES. It's worth coming, so I'm here to emphasize that.
And it's coming up...
This weekend.
Soon.
And I'm going to get my rest.
Thank you. And we have this up on our website also.
We do.
Good, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next item, I'm actually going to turn over to the city attorney.
Mayor, a member of the council wanted to bring you up to speed in terms of the Bayland survey process, and where that matter stands, and the process that I suggest that be followed to carry it out in order to get the survey out to the community within a reasonable period of time. As the council knows, the council committee of councilmember Miller and Lance have been working closely with the city's consultant to formulate and review a proposed community survey concerning the Baylands. And that work is nearly completed at this time, and the goal is to have the community survey conducted before the Planning Commission begins its review of the Baylands' final EIR and related planning documents. The final EIR on Baylands is now out on the street. Council has it available to us, as well as the community, so it is out there now and being reviewed by the community. In order that the survey be as useful as possible, it's important to maintain the integrity of the survey in the sense that the questions, the way they are posed, and the way they are framed, and the questions asked, we are trying to keep that from being broadcast out to the community until it's actually released. And so therefore, we have been discussing what the final step should be before the survey is put in the final form and sent out to the public. Accordingly, here's what I recommend and advise that the council do. Once the committee is satisfied that the form and the content of the survey is complete, which should be very soon, we would then set up separate meetings between the consultants and first two council members, and then the remaining council member who is not on the committee. The consultant would meet with, those two council members would meet with that separate council member. The consultant would then meet with the chairs of the Planning Parks Commission, and the Open Space and Ecology, and Complete Streets and Safety Committees. And then also a separate meeting with the representative from U... And then also a separate meeting with the representative from UPC, Jonathan Scharfman. At those meetings, the, the idea would be that the participants will be given a copy of the draft survey, will have a chance to review that survey, and then have the opportunity to ask questions of the consultant and then provide any comments or concerns that the, that the council members and the chairs and Mr. Scharfman may have about the survey. We would then gather that survey back up so it would not be leaving the room. And we would ask the participants not to discuss the form of the content of the survey with others. The committee would then be reconvened and would have, and we would then provide those comments that we received from those various meetings with the committee. And then as a result of that, the consultant would then meet with the committee and make any necessary changes to the final form of it. And then as soon as practical thereafter, it would be sent out to the community for its consideration and returned to the, to the city. That's the process that, that I would recommend that the council follow. If there's questions or concerns about that proposed process, please let me know. Otherwise, that will be the process that will follow. And I'll be glad to answer any questions concerning that.
Thank you. Any questions for our city attorney?
Well, it's a recommendation coming from our subcommittee, so.
Yeah. I have none.
It's, it's obvious that this is something that the city takes very seriously and wants to make sure that it is, has as much integrity as it is possible. And so I think it's really important that we, we get good questions to ask to find out how our community feels about what may or may not go out on the Baylands. So I have no questions as far as that goes. And thank you for, obviously, all the hard work and, and that has gone into this process and trying to get a, a fair survey.
Yes, yeah. Well, you know, it, you know, as Michael had said, you know, the survey needs to have the integrity to, to truly represent the, the, the pulse of the community. But also, it's important for the council members to, to have buy-in on the questions as well as the important advisory chairs that, that help us. And so that strengthens the integrity of, of the survey when it goes out to the public.
So there's no action needed on this? This is just informative?
Correct.
And then it, that brings us to the mayor.
One, one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Sure. I'll be, I'll be real quick with it. Just a reminder to the council and the members of the public who might be listening that Monday night and Tuesday night, we will have the budget hearings. Monday night will be the overview and we'll commence the department presentations. We hope to complete that by Tuesday night and then have a council discussion about the budget and an ultimate adoption of the budget on the council agenda for June 18th.
And we are having an earlier start time for this on Monday?
Monday, you'll be starting, excuse me, at 7:00 PM in the conference room to discuss your planning commission appointment. And as soon as you're done with that, then we will come.
Thought that was city attorney evaluation.
That's on the 15th.
No, I, I'm talking about on Monday, the 8th.
Oh, the 8th, the 8th, okay.
Yeah. Monday, the 8th, you'll have at 7 o'clock, the planning commission appointment, which will be in the conference room. Soon as that is over, then we'll come into this room for the budget hearing.
Okay. So do we, is that time stipulated or what?
It will be on the budget, on the, it will be when we put out the agenda tomorrow.
Okay, okay. So the city attorney evaluation is before the next big meeting, which is on the 15th, which is the sustainability framework.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Busy month for the council and the subcommittees.
Mm-hmm.
And so any other reports? Okay. That brings us to countywide assignment subcommittee reports. And council member Lou did send in a report that she attended the inaugural Community Choice Advisory Committee meeting. And I'm going to not read this. It's part of communications, I'm assuming. And that she met with the skate park funding subcommittee and is going forward with the Commit to a Brick Donor program to help fund some of the amenities at the skate park.
Yeah. I talked with Jennifer Busquet, they already raised over $8,000.
Good.
That's pretty good.
Clark, do you have anything to add?
You know, I attended three county meetings. So the roundtable was last night. And two of the items that were important to Brisbane is that, so we've, we've formed these two technical working groups, one for arrivals, one for departures. Of course, in Brisbane, we're affected by departure. So two of the things that we're going to do at the next technical working group meeting is that we'll, we will show a simulation of the flights that come out of San Francisco that are the stick procedure and then the ones out of Oakland that are the candle procedure. So often, we're told that planes were vectored over Brisbane because of the Oakland flights. And I think that the new designs, the new flight procedure designs were created to be compatible with each other. So we're going to show the simulation and hopefully that, that's the case. We're also going to be looking at, and this is something that, that when they did their workshops, the, when the FAA did their workshops a year and a half ago on the, on the EA for the Metroplex, I was told by one of the FAA folks that that was the case. But no one else has been able to back that up. And so I want to see this. And, and we have consultants that can show that this is the case. We're also going to be looking at the percentages, percentage of flights that fly over the waypoint. Now waypoint is out in the bay. When the planes fly over the waypoint, they cause less impacts on our community. When they are vectored before the waypoint, that's when they have the greatest impact. And so it's been very difficult to get the, the SFO noise abatement office to provide that data. And you have to word it to them in a way that, you know, you can't nail it precisely, but you can get a pretty good estimate. Because 95% of the planes are equipped with the new RNAV capabilities. That means that they can go fly over that waypoint. The other 5%, they're, they're old school airplanes. They can't fly that chartered flight. If 95% of the planes are capable of doing it and they don't fly over the waypoint, chances are they've been vectored. So we want to know what's that percentage and see what the trend is from starting in January, when the, the new system went into place for the stick procedure. My goal is, I think that there's been just gradual improvement. And so I want to be able to chart that and then say, okay, FAA, you, you, you're, you're working, you're, you're doing a good job. Of course, you can do better. And give them that encouragement to, to, to improve. So those, those two things came out of yesterday's meeting. And then I'm on the LPMG, which is the Caltrain Modernization. And so that, that group is only informational. It doesn't even give a recommendation to the JPV. It's only informational. However, it's, it has some, some weight because Adrian Tessier is the chair of, of this body and she's also on the JPV. So we were talking about the, the car heights, so to board the, the trains. So high-speed rail is at 50 inches. We, Caltrain, for their electrified train is, is proposed to be 25 inches. But San Francisco wants 50 inches for all the trains because they want to have level boarding at the Transbay Terminal at 50 inches. However, when you look at the, the scheduling of high-speed rail trains, there's four platforms for high-speed rail, the Transbay Terminal, two for Caltrain. The trains, the high-speed, high-speed rail trains that come in and leave, there's only enough, you know, time and space to only use the four platforms. They couldn't even use the other two. But for some reason, they, they feel that they want to have that flexibility just in case a high-speed rail train needs to use one of those platforms. However, there's no money to, to build the platforms, even at the 25 inches at Caltrain stations. And there's money to build for the Transbay Terminal, but there isn't any money to connect Fourth and King to the Transbay Terminal. They're going to build the Transbay Terminal and that, that'll be more of a bus type of operation, you know, muni operation until there's that money that's available. But yeah, I know, it's quite, quite interesting. And so one of the, the things that, that might come out of wanting to be 50 inches is that you'll have four doors on the trains. And the 50-inch doors will be over the wheels and there'll be very little room to get into the train. And then you'll have these lower doors at the 25 inches that where is, you have more room to access the train. But once you have a 50-inch platform, then you'll have to, you know, you'll lose capacity on the train because you'll have these doors and you'll, you'll have to give up seats because you have too many doors. It's dumb. It's just really, really dumb and.
I was going to say stupid.
But, you know, and, because San Francisco is a stakeholder and a very influential stakeholder, they are pushing towards, you know, having this, this study and, yeah. And then the, the other, the other board I'm on is HART. And, and we're in a transition right now. HART's mission is to raise money for affordable housing, but we don't do a very good job of it. And so the lack of affordable housing is at crisis potential, is at a crisis situation in San Mateo County. And so the president of, of, of the Board Supervisor, Carol Groom, she's formed this Blue Ribbon Task Force to deal with affordable housing. But, you know, really, the HART board, you know, could potentially be that, that body because we have representation from all the cities and to supervisor participants. The only city that doesn't participate is Daly City. And so looking at perhaps restructuring HART in a way that is more collaborative with cities, look, you know, looking at cities' general plans and working with the city, individual cities' goals to help them implement those goals. So I'll keep you posted on, on that.
Thank you. Ray?
I don't have any countywide stuff. When we get to it, I'm just two, two little local things, but CCAG maybe or something like that? Anything happen?
I have to tell you that it, it feels like it was so long ago that actually, I think we've had a meeting since then where I talked about Supervisor Pine bringing in the flood, flood recommendations. That was the last CCAG meeting that we had and I've already discussed that. And then the only other thing we did was several meetings on the budget.
Yeah, I was going to.
That we'll really hear about.
Countywide stuff. And I think we were going to ask Randy to give an update on the whole drought situation, as I recall from last meeting.
Right. Because he, he was absent due to a conflict of meetings for the drought, his drought report on the last meeting. Because we were too quick for him.
You, you were indeed. I was coming back from the Bario Water Supply Conservation Agency meeting and the building was quite dark. So yes, we're in a drought.
Thanks for the update.
Well, it's, well, it's interesting only because as, you know, as the mayor mentioned, Supervisor Pine is kicking off his sea level rise study. So of course, yesterday, there was also another study that was from the San Francisco West Shore Institute. I'm sorry, ma'am, can you hear me?
No.
Okay, all right. So, and then today, we were all anticipating a civil grand jury comment on sea level rise. And then tomorrow is the kickoff for Mr. Pine's sea level rise study. So the, the comment in my email has been water, water everywhere, but not a drop to drink. You're aware that the state recently imposed some very severe restrictions. They're trying to get a 25% statewide reduction and that's been varied across communities. And what they've done for the most part is they have used a community's average residential consumption last fall as the metric for how well they were doing conservation-wise. That's a long way from being a perfect metric for a lot of people because in sometimes it just doesn't apply. There are many communities that use a lot of water in different cases. For instance, if you were Hayward and you had the Coca-Cola bottling company in there, you have a very different water pattern than other people we do. In our case, because of the size of our system, we're referred to as a small water supplier. So we were given a choice. We could either choose to reduce our consumption across the board by 25% or we could mandate two days a week only for watering. So we chose the latter. And the reason we chose the latter is that this community tends to be one of the lowest water consumers in the state of California. Our averages are 43 to 45 gallons per person, per capita, per day. And it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem reasonable in any way, shape, or form to ask those people to go down 25%. So the primary approach that we've been going after, and there are some other mandated restrictions that are in place, but we have gone and done an extensive outreach. So every one of our commercial accounts who's listed in our water meter billing system as a commercial account, and everyone who is listed in there as having a separate irrigation meter has received a communication from us. We've informed them of the new requirements. We've told them that they're going to be in effect June 22nd. And the reason that we've done that is we wanted to have enough time to get this letter out to people and to have them communicate back with us. Because if you've seen our webpage, it tells them that, you know, even addresses, addresses ending in an even number can water on these days, addresses ending in an odd number can water on these days. And that seems real simple if you have a house address. But if you're someplace up in the ridge where you have multiple irrigation meters, you don't, you may not know what the address, where that water meter is, what it's associated with. So we're trying to give everybody, every opportunity possible to be in compliance. And as we've done in the past, we always try to get out and educate our customers first. We try to encourage them when we see behaviors, patterns that are not consistent with the requirements. And it's, it's always a last resort for us to go out and to issue administrative citations to them, but that's what we're going to do. Interestingly, we've had some input from citizens. It's actually been quite helpful. You know, they've, they've told us when they see water abuses and we've gone right out there and, and we talked to these folks. And across the board, people are compliant. I'm sure that you have been tracking these articles in the papers just as I have. And I, I think there was a result of a poll out in the Chronicle this morning that indicating that, that drought is now the number one thing that's on people's minds in the state of California. And, and it's appropriate. It, it is a bad drought. We, we certainly don't want it to get to be anywhere near like that experience Australia had a number of years ago. But I'd be happy to take any questions with that.
I have, I have a member of the public that's raising her hand to, to speak on this, so I'll let her go first.
I have to report that of, what I really have been very happy to see, the, the kind of Brisbane actions that can be taken, like the alternative side of the seat, but at the pool where I am often enough and suffering from seeing people soaking in the showers for 20 minutes. We've had this sign saying five minutes maximum, but now we have, I have reported about that. And now we have, a city engineer has put these timers, the hourglasses, on each shower so people have a chance to see the sand running down and, and beating the timer. And this is so much fun and people are much more likely to pay attention when they actually see the timer working. And this is an ancient tool, right? A time, hourglass? And here we have it in modern Brisbane. And I even wrote about it to the San Francisco Chronicle columnist who's writing about paper. And he said, "It was a genius move." So that's what we have.
I think the other move there is to turn the heat down on the water so nobody wants to take a long shower. But that might not go over very well.
You turn it down too much, then people will take a long shower before they go in and then after they get out because it'll be so cold. and then after they get out because it'll be so cold. Turn the heat up, it would be better, but then that would waste electricity.
Oh, no, no. So I did have one question. And when it comes to out at the Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping District.
Yes, ma'am.
What portion is the city responsible for on watering compared to what the property owners are responsible for on watering?
That would be really difficult for me to answer for you without a map, ma'am, but I could certainly produce that if you're interested.
My concern is, I'm out there quite a bit and the medians, I've always seen that are, it appears to be Lighting and Landscaping District crews are working on the medians.
Yes, ma'am.
And that I don't know if the lawn areas at the specific buildings are part of their own personal management or if that's something that is, something that's taken care of by the property leaseholders.
So the majority of the lawns adjacent to the buildings are the responsibility of the property owners? The distinction for that is, as you're coming into the marina and if you're at the intersection where the Radisson is on your right-hand side, across the street, there are two little grass areas that stick out. There's a nice monument feature on the building to your left there that, okay, so that is actually within the SPLL, so we handle that. The other one to the right has just a little bit of grass and a couple of palm trees. It's never really been developed, but that is also a Sierra Point Landscaping and Lighting. And then, of course, all the grass at the far eastern end, that's adjacent to the marina where you have the promenade and then you have a little bit of the vegetated slope going up, that's also the city's responsibility.
Just good to know when I see the water out there.
And I believe you were the one that told us about an event.
Yeah, and it was the next night, too.
Yeah, and it's, you know, and certainly, but that's not a problem either because if people are doing it one night, they're probably doing it the next night, too. It's just they've got something going on. And a lot of times we go out there, people are very compliant. We're finding out that they're like, oh, yeah, we had a sprinkler head that went bad. Oh, our timer got bumped, it went off. We had one recently around here where it was an experience that, you know, what we're fighting is we're telling people you can't water between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, but then they are getting their irrigation crews out there because they're trying to get things in compliance, they're trying to change the sprinkler heads, and they work during the day. So they're out there and so sometimes you'll see a sprinkler on, but it's because the crew is trying to work on it. They're not gonna come out and work on it at midnight. So we're trying to be reasonable as we deal with people. And if it looks like they're putting in their best faith effort, we're trying to not punish people for that.
And I think, I think that you get more, more compliance with carrots than sticks. So, you know, start out slow and try to get as much compliance as you can.
Well, I got my grandkids trained to use the bucket and they love it. So you go to the bathroom in the morning before you shower, don't flush it, just, you know, when you turn the shower on, use the bucket till the water gets warm and then use that to flush the toilet.
Right.
And they think it's really cool.
We use the bucket for dog water.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments for staff?
Not on that issue.
Okay. Written communication.
We had two minor things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Still under Mayor's control.
Okay, I thought you were done, sorry.
The two things I just wanted to briefly mention, and this is, the first one is kind of a heads-up for my colleagues. Terry and I have been working with Stuart and Clay on the budget for a number of meetings and for a variety of reasons which we know about historically, we're dealing with a deficit situation and we're trying to reduce that, but that means making a lot of tough decisions. So we have set up a number of tough decisions that the council will have to make. So we just wanted to give you kind of a heads-up on that for Monday and Tuesday and, you know, kind of laid them all out and now you're gonna have to, we're all gonna have to decide. But I just want to let you know, I mean, it's not gonna be easy because there'll be some tough things that we'll have to really.
They made a very nice PowerPoint, which we have available now. And the items for discussion are very simply laid out on probably two pages that are very easy to, easy to spot and read and give a little thought to on where priorities lie.
Okay. So that was the first thing I wanted to mention. And then the second was, I think, the main reason for mentioning this is so that people know that we are aware of the issue. And I mentioned it to the city manager this morning. It turns out that the way in which the FEIR for the Baylands is put together is not very user-friendly because the comments and questions are separated from the responses. And trying to connect them together, the process is so incredibly cumbersome that it makes it very user-unfriendly. And so I've heard from one person who's been looking at it online and who is a, you know, computer type, and he said, I mean, there are so many ways that we know how to do this now that there's just no excuse for this kind of obsolete format. So I'm hoping that this is something that, you know, when John Swicki gets back from his vacation, that can talk with Clay and talk with the consultants and see if we can do a better job of making the FEIR more user-friendly. Because if we want people to use it, we want the planning commission to use it, you know, because there's a lot of stuff and you certainly want it as accessible as possible. So that's just a concern. I just wanted to, you know, bring it up and I don't know whether the city manager wants to respond, but I'm fairly sure that we'll do the best we can to fix that, right?
As indicated, we'll talk with John on next week and also with the consultants and see what's the best way to approach that.
You've got a little feedback in your microphone there, I don't know why. But you turned it off, so it's okay. Just FYI. That brings us to written communications. And other than our disaster preparedness and the comments from Commissioner Lou, I don't have any oral communications, too. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
As long as the public is here, why not? And it's not that late. Anya Miller, Brisbane resident, also a member of the Sematour County Community Choice Advocacy Group. That's a countywide group that is working closely to, with all cities and the county to make the Community Choice Energy District a possibility. And a meeting that Councilmember Lou attended as a former representative of the city, I was a public attendee and several members of the advocacy group were there. And I just personally found it a very positive meeting. It was attended by all 20 cities' representatives and Supervisor Pine, I suppose, what's her name again? Grohl? Yeah.
Carol Grohl.
Yeah, she was the, also there, they led the meeting. It went beautifully. Very thorough representations by the consultants working on the feasibility and the establishment. The whole thing is really on track. And I think Sematour County is held as a star in, among counties. Marin and Sonoma, you know, have done it before. Sonoma is now really moving ahead. Marin had trouble because it was the first and still are being criticized for some things, but Sematour County is really looking great. And I just hope that this will continue and that our city will continue to participate to make this a reality. Sonoma County, the first year of operation of that Community Choice Energy District made $12 million profit. And that's public as opposed to PDNE. So the promise is wonderful and in Sematour County, we really have a lot of market. This is really an exciting thing and hopefully it'll be established by the end of next year and we start moving into renewable energy at a lower price than PDNE.
Well, and Brisbane also has the opportunity to help provide some of that power, possibly.
That is a possibility because all those revenues, extra revenues that the public agency, Public JPA produces can be used to build local facilities as opposed to distant ones with the transmission coming in. So this is another goal of theirs to have what's called distributed energy where we are and have it here. So the Baylands certainly is a real opportunity in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Tony.
Not to call anybody by name. That brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion?
We were gonna move in memory of.
Oh, you're right.
Councilmember Mayor Corky.
We'll close in memory of the Honorable Dr. Paul Corky.
Right.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.